We're going to bring the Meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. It's just about 2:00, about 30 seconds away, maybe. We're now going to take up item 15 on the agenda. This is to appoint four people to the Culture and Tourism Board. Two as representatives for the hotel and motel operators, one as representative of other commercial interests, and one as citizen-at-large representative, each for a two-year term that will expire July 2020. I talked with the city manager during the break here. I think the best way to proceed is to just interview everybody in the order in which they're listed, and then when we're done interviewing, we'll go from there. So, and what that means, I don't really know, but we'll go from there. How's that?
So...
Then we'll go on.
Yeah. That means Mike Santos is the first one.
All right. Bring in Mike.
And Chris is helping us with that.
Oh, who's that?
I don't know, a uniform.
Where's the uniform?
Yeah, I know.
Come on, Mike.
I made that up two years ago.
Sit down, sit down, man.
It's that guy.
We had to fish the mic in.
Where's the uniform?
Yeah.
You got it under your shirt.
Sorry, I did.
How you doing this afternoon?
I'm good, thank you. Thanks for having me. Good afternoon.
Good. Well, you know, for everybody who hasn't heard, and I don't have to hear it out in the hall, we always ask everybody kind of the same question, so nobody gets a leg up. We're going to interview everybody, and then we'll figure it out after we interview everybody here, so we'll go from there.
Okay.
So, I'm going to start off, and then we'll probably go this way, probably, or just where we're going to go.
Okay.
And each individual board member gets asked a couple of questions, or more than that if they want to. So, my question to you is, to start, is, you know, to get you kind of warmed up, is, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you want to do it, and then there's another question after that.
Well, my name is Mike Santos. I've lived here since the early '70s, where my parents brought us up here from a little town in the Central Valley. And I went to high school here, married my high school sweetheart. I got two wonderful children, three wonderful grandkids, living here in the community, so I'm very lucky that way. Worked a great career with the city, five of which were in the Street Department, 25 in the Fire Department. I retired two years ago this September, which is hard to believe. I had a great career, ended on a high note. And I knew, I think the reason that I applied, is I knew that when I retired, that I wasn't going to entirely leave the city behind, or leave public service behind. I always knew that, I think I wanted to serve in some capacity. And when this notice came out in the newspaper, I went, "Oh, huh, okay, this might be where I'd like to go," because for the last three to five years, I really liked where the city's gone with promoting not just the train, and the museums, and everything that we have, and our history, which is very important, but we finally decided to share our outdoor with the world, really, lately. And I like where the city's going right now, and so I'd like to be a part of that.
Thank you, Mike. My question to you, it's a simple question, but I want you to think about it. What's the purpose of the CTA, Cultural and Tourism Authority? What is it, what's the purpose of it?
Well, I think it's, the purpose of it is to promote our city in a positive way, and its assets, so that people will want to come here. And I think one of the ways, or probably where we start, is getting our citizens to believe in our community. Being a local, like I said before, I believe in what we're doing, in promoting all of our assets that we have, our arts and culture, what's going on out in Stewart, at the Stewart Indian Facility, and, like I said, our outdoor stuff, our sports, the golf courses that we have, all that stuff that we have, I think, I think it's our job to promote that in a positive way, get it out in the most efficient way. And I think that starts with, with the locals believing in what we're doing, so that we can share, share our city with everybody else. We're the capital city, and I think we should shine and be the jewel of the state.
And following up on that, just, the CTA's, C in CTA stands for culture. Tell me a little bit about what you think about that.
Our culture, I think, with the Stewart Indian Facility, that's part of our culture. I think our history is part of our culture, and where we've come from, and how we became a city. And I think the arts now, in the present day, is helping and promoting our culture. And so I think with all those combined, I think that's, I think that's what that stands for.
Hi, Mike.
Hello.
The focus of the Tourism Authority is promoting events that are healthy for community, that promote education and innovation. So with that in mind, in what ways, or what markets, do you think the Tourism Authority, the Culture and Tourism Authority should pursue to expand the use of the multipurpose athletic center, so that we can increase the utilization and heads and beds?
Yeah, I think we should obviously bring in more sporting events, maybe promote stuff, you know, basketball tournaments. I, I think that we could utilize that facility with, lost for words, just bringing more sporting events into it, and getting it out, maybe combining it with other events that we have, such as the Epic Rides, maybe if we have, you know, we could bring in maybe some music type events, and let people aware that we have this great facility that we can, that we can utilize for, you know, all the events.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, good. You made me feel old.
[laughing]
When you said that you retired two years ago, you worked for the city for 30 years. Of course, you worked for me before that.
Yep.
So it's been 32 years.
You're that old?
Yeah. So anyway, my question, Mike, you kind of hit upon the four legs of the CTA: tourism, sports, recreation, culture. Give me your thoughts on how you believe time and money, or resources, should be allocated to those four legs. What priorities would you have?
I think right now, to me, the outdoors right now is a big deal for me. I think the Muscle Power Group has done an outstanding job in developing our, our outdoor activities, and our trails, and all that, and bringing that to the forefront, basically to the world. And so I think that I'd like to see that be expanded on. I think that we can combine that with our, our arts and our culture, like I said before, maybe bringing in big festivals, like a music festival, to combine with a sporting event, or, or some kind of a, an arts and music festival. And then I think that we should really look at combining that with our history. You know, we can, these events that we bring in, I think that we should continue to promote our history in the VNT, and our museums, and the Stewart Facility, and all that stuff that we have. And I think we can do that when we bring these groups in, and somehow combine them, so that, you know, whether you're coming in to visit the train, you, you know, we can let you know about, hey, some of the trail systems that we have. If you're coming in to use our outdoor, our great outdoors, we can say, hey, you know, we have a really great museum here in town, they're doing a lot of stuff out at Stewart. And, and so I think by doing that, and I think we can pretty much give them equal time.
So to drill down a little deeper in that, when it comes to spending money for promoting certain aspects, where would your highest priorities be on spending the money? Because you can spend money on, on one of those legs, if you think that you're going to get the best bang for the buck, and then when you get them here, promote the others. So what I'm really looking for is, where do you think the money should go to give us the best value to bring people here?
The one thing that you think would bring them in? One or two, yeah. I think the outdoors. I think if we can bring in some big outdoor events, I think that's where, in my personal opinion, as just a citizen here in town, and a local, that, where I've seen things change in the last three to five years, and where people are getting excited about it, you know, it's drawn them to, to the downtown, and I think that's, I think that's where we can bring them in, get more heads in the, you know, in the bed. And with that being said, I think we can then make them aware, make people aware, as they come into our communities, of the other things that we have to offer here. You bet.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I might have two.
Okay.
Depends on where you go here. In 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved a 1% increase in the occupancy tax, to be dedicated to the arts, the culture arts component, to diversify what we're doing. But when we did that, we put a five-year sunset clause. So what outcomes or results would justify your recommendation for the continuation of the funding past the year 2021?
So I think we're seeing the results with that. I thought that was a very clever way to, to fund the arts in this community, and I'm personally for it. I, I've seen some of the results with some of the art around town, and some of the excitement about our arts and culture, and the draw that it has for not only that, but the music that's coming into town, and bringing the Brewery Arts Center into, into the light. And so I would be in favor of that, and I think that we should, that we should look at that, and if we continue to see the results that I feel that we've been seeing, that I'd be supportive of that.
Okay. And then, it will be a new board, practically, for the CTA. So as a new member, how will you help expand the diversity of Carson City's tourism assets, and expand the economic engine of tourism in our community?
I think by, again, being part of the community, and feeling good about what's going on, and building on what the staff down at the Visitor Center has done, I, I think that we continue on and build upon that, and just use our social media, if you will, to continue to get the results I think we're getting. I think we get more bang for our buck that way, and I think it gets our message out there, and what we're doing in this community. And I think by, by using that, and utilizing that, we can, I think we can show what we're all about. You bet.
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike Brad, you make me feel young, because I participate in a lot of the recreation, I think Brad does too, and I'm older than he is. I have a couple of questions as well. I'm a great believer that apples don't fall far from trees. As an example, I was a newspaper man much of my life, and my parents were both newspaper people before me. So I think interests emanate from top-down, in that sense of what your parents show you, you sort of follow. So tell me, what are your children and your grandchildren involved in, that you encourage, or that you try to discourage? If you want to give me the downside, but mostly the upside, please.
So my, like I said before, I'm lucky enough to have my family here in town. My son works at the hospital, in the ER room. My daughter owns a business here in town. All three of my children go to school at Mark Twain. All right, take that back, my oldest granddaughter's now at the middle school. Now I'm agent myself. But they're...
World.
But I, I try to encourage my kids to be involved in the community, in sports. Being raised here, they know a lot of people, so we promote a lot of family stuff, we get together quite a bit, and they are, they are very active in school, very smart kids. They like to read, and I actually, on Saturday, when we have the Levitt Series concerts, we actually go as a family, and, and watch the concerts, and my granddaughters get me up there on the stage and try to dance. I'm not very good at it, but anyway, we, so we try to do things by getting out in the community, and taking advantage of what Carson City has to offer.
That all speaks well of you. My second question, not only, as Garen pointed out, will there be a, or maybe it was Lori, basically, mostly a new board, you also probably face new personnel down there. What would you look for in, three things that you would look for in somebody new, as, if you were screening them?
I would like to see, first of all, that they believe in the message that we've started here in Carson City, and what we're promoting. And then, second of all, I'd like to see integrity. I think integrity is important. And then I think that I'd like to see what this particular person has done in the past, as far as promoting community, and, and, you know, hopefully, they come from a background where they've been honest and genuine about where they're at, and what they've done in their past.
Thank you, and thanks for, thanks for applying.
Thank you.
Mike, any questions you have of us?
No, I would like to make a comment if I could.
Get back, please do so.
First of all, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to apply for this position. I feel it would be an honor to be on the board. I've learned a lot in the last couple of months since I've applied, and I want to continue to learn. And I think, again, as somebody that's a local, and somebody that believes that, that believes in what we're doing in this community, I know when I travel, one of the things I take pride in is asking the locals when I come into a community, hey, what is great about this community? What can you recommend? You know, food, entertainment, that kind of thing. And I want to be that person, and I am that person when people come into town, and I wanted to take it to the next level, and I hope that I have the opportunity to serve on this board.
Good. You know, I kind of do the same thing when I see people walking up and down the street, ask them where they're from, why they're here, what they think. Not a bad way to get a, kind of a feel for what's going on, so, all right. All right. Mike, thanks. You're welcome to sit here and listen, and we'll see where it goes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And thanks for your services to the city.
You're welcome.
And we won't hold it against you, you used to work for this guy.
He was rough.
Yeah, well, you don't have to tell me. All right.
Next, we have Jill Davis. Then we'll go to Michael Jones.
How you doing today?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Good. So in full disclosure, I had the chance to go out and spend a couple hours with Mr. Jones a little bit, and so I know quite a bit about, you know, what, what his ideas are, at least vis-à-vis the Goldust out there. But, Mike, why don't, why don't you just tell us a little bit about, you know, your background? I know you've got a long resume, and why you want to be on the CTA board?
Yeah, well, you know, Mike Jones, I'm the general manager at Goldust West.
Your microphone isn't on.
Push. Can you hear me now? Sorry. I obviously don't know how to run a microphone either. But I'm the general manager at Goldust West. I've been there about a year and a half now. I've spent my entire career in the hospitality industry, I'm getting closer to 40 years here in northern Nevada, between the lake Reno and Carson. Started right out of school, and fell in love with the area, and then figured out a way, how do I make a living here and raise my family? So I've held just about every position in the hospitality industry. Just, you know, I'm a, I love northern Nevada, even though I'm not a native, I, you know, I've raised my family here, and I consider myself a northern Nevadan. And I've always tried to get involved in, in the community that I work in. I think it's an obligation, especially as a business operator, to give back something to the community. And I'm hoping, the reason I went on the board, I'm hoping that some of my experience and expertise, I can pass that along, and leadership, and, and help Carson grow economically, and the rest, along with the rest of the hotel and lodging properties.
And following up on that, give us your thoughts on what the mission and goal, I know it's in writing, but tell us what, what you think about, what the purpose of the CTA is.
Well, I, I think the main person, the main goal is to grow the economic health of the community, and the lodging properties. But it's also to make sure that we're keeping, we're moving tourism, and, and the arts and culture along with it, and that both of them work together. I think that, that that's really, I try not to overcomplicate things, to lead the board in a direction that I think it's gone, and it's been improving, and going in a positive direction for the last five years or so, and I think I got to continue that, continue moving forward, making sure that our programs are the right programs, and the people we're bringing into the community, and to continue that.
Thank you, Mike. Board, if it's okay, I think, since your honor, can we just, sort of, let's just start with you on all these, and we'll go this way. How's that? Is that all right? And then we don't have to worry about who's going next. We'll go the same way.
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Mike, the Culture and Tourism Authority focus is promoting events that are healthy for the community, they promote education, and they promote innovation. So with that in mind, in what ways, or what markets, do you think the CTA should pursue going forward to expand the use of the multipurpose athletic center, and increase its utilization, as well as heads and beds?
Yeah, well, you know, the MAC, I think, is an underutilized facility, and we need to, we need to fix that. Arts and culture are such an important part of tourism, I look at them as one. They go together, if one's successful, usually the other's successful. I think, I think I need to work closely with Mark Salinas, I've helped him out on a project before, making sure that we start looking at arts and culture, and more events in town. I, I look at what Reno has done with Art Town, and how that has become such a successful program, and moving into those types of community activities, and getting the community at large more involved. I think, you know, we, we talk about, you know, we have the VNT, which is, which is a great, you know, for people to visit. But I think once they're here, there's also a ton of other things that we can do with them, to bring them into the arts and culture part of the program.
Hello, Michael.
Hi.
I see four legs to the CTA: tourism, sports, recreation, arts and culture. Can you give us your thoughts on how you would prioritize those four legs, and where you feel we're going to get the best bang for our buck in spending actual resources, money and time?
Well, certainly, there's been a lot of focus on, on the sports side of it in the recent years, and for good reason. We've had a lot of, you know, team soccer, and softball, that have come to the area, and I think that's still going to be a focus. But I think the outdoor aspect of the area needs to be promoted. I would think that's probably an area that I would focus on a little higher. And then, culture, and arts and culture, I think it's extremely important, but it takes time. It takes time to build, and it's not going to happen overnight, and, and so that's, I'd focus on that third. And the fourth one, I'm sorry, Brad?
Tourism.
Tourism. And tourism is making sure that we're evaluating all, all the groups that come. And of course, that's what, it's, the tourism is the main focus of, of the board, of bringing, and if tourism comes in, then you've, you've solved a lot of the other issues. So that's probably the main focus. Mm-hmm. Hi, good afternoon.
In 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved a 1% increase in the transient occupancy tax, to be used for the arts. One of the components of that, however, has a sunset clause for that occupancy tax. So what outcomes or results would justify your recommendation for the continuation of the funding past 2021?
I think I mentioned that, I think arts and culture takes time to build, and it's not going to happen overnight. I would not be in favor of, of reducing that, taking that 1% away. I would keep it. And you're asking for an outcome, it's hard to look four years out, but as long as we're making steady progress, and we're seeing the effort, because not every, not every project that we bring in is going to have a tangible ROI in dollars and cents, but in the community, it'll have an ROI, and how the community is, is perceiving it. So I would not be in favor of reducing the tax, and as far as a specific outcome, I don't know if I can give a specific outcome that would make me change my mind to take it away.
And then, the next thing is, as the board will be new, the whole, the whole board will be new, how will you help expand the diversity of Carson City's tourism assets, and expand the economic engine of tourism for our community?
Well, I think the first thing I'd have to do, if I was selected for the board, is, is look at the strategic plan, and see if, if it makes sense, and we're, and we're heading in the right direction. And then look at the financials for the last couple of years, to make sure I understand where the money has gone. And then I would look at our social media program, to make sure that we're, we're in the right spots, and we're out there daily. I think it would take, you know, understanding the strengths and the weaknesses of the employees of, on the Tourism Authority, and making sure that the people there are in the right spot, and, and understanding their strengths.
You haven't spoken about family, your predecessor did. I'll ask you first, do you have a family? Do you live here in Carson City?
I, I do have a family. I have two sons, and a wife. I guess I should have mentioned her first, she brought the sons.
That wife's like that.
Yeah. I, I live in Gardinerville. I've lived in, well, I lived in Lake Tahoe for a few years.
And then you moved away from the snow?
Yes, when we had kids, she wanted them to, to be able to kick them out on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And there weren't many sidewalks in Lake Tahoe at the time.
The reason I ask is because your predecessor, I wanted to make the question as similar as I could. Had you not said you had family, I would have asked it and said, what are your interests? But I don't believe the apple falls far from the tree, so what do you encourage your family members to be involved in? What have you been involved in?
Well...
In terms of these kinds of things? We're talking about culture, sports, et cetera.
Right. No, my, my, I moved up here, and I, I came up here on a whim, actually, and then just fell in love with the area, because I like to ski, and I like to hike, and I like to fish. And so, I think I said earlier, then I looked around and said, okay, but can you, how do you make a living up here? And so I've raised my family... And so I've raised my family. You know, we were always, we were skiers. My sons were competitive snowboarders. They also played Little League and all the high school sports that most kids do, but we were very involved in that. I was very involved in the Heavenly Ski and Snowboard Foundation where we were trying to get underprivileged kids involved in skiing and trying to make it more accessible to everyone. You know, we, I'm sure we did the, the usual, you know, we were involved in Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and really, I got my family. We lived in, you know, in a beautiful area and it has, you know, a sort of a hot season and a cold season. I make sure, made sure that we were involved in both and we didn't sit inside and play video games all day. So I've tried to instill that in, in my, my boys. My one boy's getting ready to graduate from UNR here in the fall and my other son's out fighting a fire in Susanville.
Thank you. My second question is, not only will it be, as Laurie pointed out, a relatively new Board, but you'll probably be bringing on new staff. What three major things would you be looking for in terms of the people or person that you bring on Board to, to be the full-time staff?
You know, the one thing I look at in any position is passion. If somebody's passionate about what they do and what they, and you can usually tell that if somebody has a passion for what they do. And that's certainly I would look at, and I even look at that almost more than background because I, I think somebody who's passionate can overcome some of the background issues. But that would be the first thing I'd look at, and passion. And then I'd look at, you know, the Board's got to work together and the staff's got to work together and how do they fit in with the other members? And so those are probably the two most important things I would look for. And then, of course, experience. You know, passion and, and personality is great, but, but you've got to have some practical knowledge of the, of the area that you're working in also.
I think that concludes, anything you, any questions, Ross?
No, I just thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate you taking a little bit of time with me today and, and listening to me. And I realize you've got tough decisions to make, but if I'm chosen, I, you can, I'll, you know, give you 100%.
Good. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
All right. You're welcome to sit and listen or whatever you need, whatever you want to do. Now you don't have to go back out in the hall.
No, thanks. I didn't, I didn't mean to put you out.
We're not going to put you out. Well, we will going to tell your wife, though, that you mentioned her last, so.
Now it's Candy Duncan.
Hi, Candy. You've been in this room before?
Couple times.
How are you doing today?
Wonderful.
Good, good.
Good. At least I don't have to stand up and down.
Yeah. Do we have other chairs out there?
Yeah, there's chairs.
No more podium.
Yeah, no more podium. Okay, no more podium. All right. Candy, you know, we, you, you, let me just say, you know, you've been on the Convention and Visitors Bureau before, long time. Why do you want to get back in the soup?
Well, I've been asking myself that a lot lately. And the reason is because I sincerely loved working for the Convention and Visitors Bureau is what we called it at that time. I loved working for Carson City. I love this community. It, I can't get it out of my system. I love talking about it. I love promoting it. I love telling people about all the cool things we have here and the great things we have to do. And I just feel like I have a lot of, a lot to offer. I have a lot of passion for Carson City. I would love to be a part of the process again, just being part of the renaissance of Carson City and the new events and the new downtown and all the great things that are happening. And I'm just not really ready to, to leave my feelings for Carson City behind me. So I thought, well, this would be a great way for me to, to serve the community under another capacity and I just really would love that opportunity.
And I know, you know, I'm going to give you maybe called a softball question, but I want to hear your answer. What's the purpose of the CTA? Not the Visitors Bureau, but the CTA. What is the purpose of it?
The Cultural and Tourism Authority. So as I understand it, I believe that the purpose is to promote not only the culture of our community. I think it's important now to bring that to the forefront because in the past, it was more about just appealing to visitors and trying to find attractions that would appeal to visitors. But I think it's important to include cultural events as well as the arts community, all the great things that we have going on and to be able to promote those to tourists as well as to our residents.
Hi, Candy.
Hi, Karen.
Got a couple of questions for you. First of all, the Culture and Tourism Authority focus is promoting events that are healthy for the community, that promote education and innovation. So with that in mind, in what ways would you see, or what markets do you see that we should be tapping into to increase utilization at the multipurpose Athletic Center and also promote heads and beds?
Heads and beds, okay. The heads and beds one, I think that already there's a lot of events, I believe, that are fulfilling that purpose. The bike events, the down, all the events that we have downtown now, the different historic things we have in our menu for people to do. And of course, I have to mention the VNT Railway because I think that that's another place that you can get a lot of visitors from. The multipurpose center, I, I guess I have to be honest with you and tell you that I have been to it. I've got grandkids that use it all the time, but I haven't really given that that much thought, to tell you the truth. But I think that definitely it's a wonderful facility and there certainly should be more ways for us to use that to promote the, the ambitions of the CTA.
And then the other question I just have to ask, since I'm the only member on the Board right now, in your capacity, you're working for the VNT as a private contractor.
Right.
Okay. Do you, and do you feel that it's going to affect your ability to serve when we deal with aspects of the VNT in terms of our budgeting, that you would have to recuse yourself? Just your thought process on that?
Right. And I do appreciate the fact that there may be times when I would have to recuse myself and I'm, I totally get that and understand it. I think that what I may be able to bring to the CTA is a better understanding of the operation as it is now of the VNT Railway and the things that we're doing to try and, and make ourselves a little bit more sustained, a little more self-sustaining. So I think I could bring that aspect of it to the Board, but certainly I would understand if I had to recuse myself and I would do that.
Hello, Candy.
Hi, Brad.
So I see that there are four legs to the CTA: tourism, sports, recreation and culture. Can you give us your thoughts on how you would prioritize expending resources, time and money, between those four legs to get the best bang for our buck for economic benefit to Carson City?
Well, to me, the easiest one would be tourism because I think that, that with tourism and with sports, both of those, by increasing our exposure and our visitation, that certainly does help our bottom line by filling our beds, getting people to patronize our restaurants and other businesses here in Carson City and also by helping get the name Carson City even more on the map than it already is, as becoming a place that cares about those kinds of things. And so, and the arts and culture, I think those are wonderful enhancements to a lot of great things that we already have as far as the sports and the tourism, the history. I mean, we just have so many really great things here in this community to promote that I really am happy to see them all being kind of grouped together like that.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Laurie.
So in 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved a 1% increase in the occupancy tax for the arts. But one of the things we did is put a sunset clause on that occupancy tax. So please tell me what outcomes or results would justify your recommendation for the continuation of that funding past 2021?
Okay. Well, I, obviously, I think that if, if you can see that that 1% increase has really made a difference, you need to be able to take a look at the, at the results of that and what, what projects that money was used for and then how those translated into increasing the bottom line for Carson City, whether that be room tax collections or sales tax collections, whatever goes along with those kinds of events. But if it's working and if that really did enhance things and enable you to bring more of that kind of event, then I think it would certainly be worth taking a look at continuing it.
And then my next question, as, might not be kind of new to you, but as the Board would be new, how would you, as a new Board member, help expand the diversity of Carson City's tourism assets and expand the economic engine of tourism in our community?
Well, I think as a new Board member, along with a lot of other new Board members, I think that what I could bring to that makeup is maybe some institutional knowledge of things that I feel we would work to do, to accomplish those goals. And also, I could also bring to the new Board a voice of experience as far as events and other things that I think would be an asset to Carson City. So I think that, I, I think I would bring that kind of experience to the Board. Plus, as I said before, just my feelings of excitement and really passion for Carson City and all the ways that we can use our assets.
You just mentioned in one of your answers, family. And I'm a great believer that the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. So tell me for my first question and your answer, what is it that your family is interested in doing? What is it that you're interested in doing that falls into these categories of arts or recreation or whatever?
Well, I am the mother of three and grandmother of seven and four of my seven grandchildren live here in Carson City and two of my three children. So we are interested, and we, we are golfers. We are really interested in the history. My kids grew up with me as the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So if you ask any one of them, they would tell you, they could actually give tours of Carson City because they had to do them so many times with me. And then my grandkids are all in sports. They are football, baseball, basketball, you name it. I mean, my family is very much integrated into the community of Carson City. So it's not just to enhance the menu of things to do for visitors, but for families. And I think that this is an amazing place to live and to raise a family, obviously.
Ditto. Secondly, not only will we have basically almost a new Board, we'll probably be bringing on new people in the office. Could you tell me what three things you would look for if you were to hire someone new for those positions? And you've had that position, so you might have some very strong opinions on that.
Well, I think that whoever is, gets the privilege of heading up the Visitors, I can't call it that anymore, the CTA, has big shoes to fill. I think that Joel has done a fantastic job. And I think that adding on to the understanding of how important the sports activities and sports events are to Carson City, plus not forgetting our heart, which is, I believe, our history, our Kit Carson Trail, the Capitol, all the museums. And we have such a unique history in Carson City. And the other thing is understanding that Carson City really can be a unique destination and that we don't have to, to think that the way to sell ourselves is to say, well, we're close to Reno and Lake Tahoe because we have things here that are better than what Reno and Lake Tahoe has. We have the real deal here. We don't have to make it up. And so I think that that new person should understand those wonderful assets about Carson City.
Candy, you, thank you for applying. And do you have any questions, Ross?
No, I don't think so.
You want, anything that you'd like to add?
No, I, I think really, as I've said before and said when I started, I'm just really happy that I have this opportunity. One of the things I thought before I retired is what will I do in my future life? And I know that one of the things I hoped I would be able to do is come back at some point and serve as a volunteer on the Board and help in that way. So I'm just happy that the opportunity is here again and I appreciate your considering me. Thank you.
Thank you, Candy. Okay. You're welcome to sit here, as you know, listen, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks. All right.
Next is Stu Wexler.
How you doing?
I'm doing great. How's everybody doing?
Doing all right. They let you out of the property down there for a while?
Yeah, they told me to leave.
They told you you're sitting there, they told you to leave?
Yeah, they were easily, honestly.
So how's the property doing down there?
Property is doing great. It's very busy this time of year and, you know, obviously with the Black Bear, you know, constantly busy.
Black Bear's been a success?
Yes, yes. And they keep changing it up, changing their menu and putting new specials in. So, yeah, it's really done well.
Good. We each ask all the same questions to everybody here, so I'm going to start off and get, you know, you've probably been through interviews before, but let me just let you expound a little bit on your background and why you want to be on the CTA.
Okay. Well, my background is, for your 30 years, has been in sales, starting when I was 20 years old. And my background, as most people know, was with, started with the Hampton Inn in hospitality about 2008. Was the Sales Manager there. And when the transition to new ownership came there, I transitioned over to the Wyndham Garden and, and now the Hotel Sales Manager for them. And the reason I, I would like to be is I've been involved with the Bureau for a long time. In the beginning, a long time ago, and what I've seen is the change in, in some of the directions we've taken improved. I believe that the direction in which we're going, what we're doing, how we're reaching out to different areas to bring people here, to bring events here, has really improved the revenue, the city, the quality of city, and I, I think it's a benefit for Carson.
Generally articulate what you believe to be the purpose of the CTA.
The, I believe the purpose of the CTA is to reach out to different communities, to show that Carson City is more than a stopover. When I've worked at the Hampton, when I see a bus tour coming in, I want them to stop here for a little time instead of a stopover when they're going to Yosemite or going up to Tahoe. And I, excuse me, I believe we can do that with what we have to offer. I've seen the change in Carson. I've lived here for 21 years. So just in that short, in that short time, I've, compared to some of the others, I've seen a lot of changes. So I believe it's, it's to reach out, to show different markets what this area has to offer in tourism, in museums, in hospitality, in the culture, in the direction we're heading. And I believe that has a definite purpose. And I believe that once they reach out and they can do what they're doing now, I think people see Carson City in a different light than maybe what they've seen in the past.
And expound a little bit, if you could, on the cultural part of the CTA.
Well, as far as the, the transition that happened, as far as what we have as compared to other cities, how we're going in the cultural, arts and cultural, I believe that has a benefit as something that kind of has been here but never has fully been expanded on. And I believe with that, we, you know, showing different people that we do have that capability, I believe that that's a benefit. And how we're progressing, you know, not just tourism, but the arts and culture. And I see, you know, I've And I see, you know, I've worked with different people and I've see what the ideas are and I see the cooperation that everybody seems to have right now in, in progressing with that.
Thank you, Stu. Okay. Karen?
Hi, Stu.
Hi, Karen.
You know, the CTA's focus is promoting events that are healthy for the community, promoting education, promoting innovation. So with that in mind, in what ways or in what markets would you like to see the CTA pursuing to expand the utilization of the MAC and thereby increase heads and beds as well? But what's your thought on that?
Well, I, we have pretty much the handle on our sports. We've seen that. We're founded, we're grounded in our sports. We have that no matter what. And I'd like to see that with the MAC, what we can present as a year-round type of activities. You know, it's not just summertime, it's what we can do in our shoulder seasons when our weather is not quite as what you would see in, in some of the warmer climates. And I think some of the activities and working together that, and not just sports, but just different educational, especially with the MAC. And I think that really is a benefit because there's a lot of towns like ours that don't have that capability in the off-season of being able to accommodate people coming into Carson City. We want to keep it more than just summertime. We like to try and keep it all year-round. And I think with some of the arts, even if we have art demonstrations at the MAC, the MAC is a fantastic tool for us. So I think we need to take more advantage of it.
Hi, Stu.
Hey, Brad.
I see four legs to the CTA: tourism, sports, recreation, arts and culture. Can you give us your thoughts on how you would prioritize and delegate expenditures, resources between those four to try to generate the best economic benefit for the city?
Well, in where we are now, I, I wouldn't want to change the sports. I believe sports has brought a lot of awareness of who Carson City is. I think actually if there was more fields, we would have more sports. We see what, you know, Reno and Sparks has done with what they have up there. So I'd like to, you know, sports is a big part of it, so I'd like to see that and continue. I believe that's, that's a big part. And also hospitality. But in that hospitality, it's not just the heads and beds, but it's also brings in revenue for all of Carson City. We're talking the restaurants, you know, the gas stations. So it just brings in a wide range of revenue. So I'd like to see the sports, the hospitality, and then the arts and culture as, because it's kinda new stage, it's anew, and I like to see that expand. I think that definitely needs a priority. To bring in more culture, to bring in more art, I don't think people really consider Carson City as a cultural and art destination as they would a Phoenix or even, even Reno. And then, so that would, that would be the priority. But I, I like sports. I believe that's the foundation of what Carson City has become. We need to expand on that. I think what they've done now and the events that are, are coming here, more cultural, we have in a couple of weeks the Jukebox International Film Festival coming. They have people from all over the world coming in to see this film festival. So I think if we can work with groups more like that, that Carson City is a great place to have something like that, I think that would be great, too.
Good afternoon, Stu.
Hi.
Hi. In 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved a 1% increase in the occupancy tax dedicated to the arts.
Right.
When we did that, we put a five-year sunset clause. So what outcomes or results would justify your recommendation for the continuation of that funding past the sunset of 2021?
My opinion would be if we are able to track who is coming in because, because of that, you know, obviously it created quite a stir in the lodging properties when that happened. So we need to see, we need to be able to track that we are on the right path and that what we, if we are tracking that they're coming in for that particular purpose, then we can expand on that. But the problem is, I think a lot of properties don't really, are able to track that. So we need some sort of system where we are tracking that and then we can report back, you know, to the board and see how that goes.
And then my second question is, the CTA board will like be all-new members practically here.
Right.
So how will you help expand the diversity of Carson City's tourism assets and expand the economic engine of tourism for our community?
Well, being in hospitality, I'm open-minded. I've seen what we, where we've come and flexible, open to ideas. There's so many different paths to take throughout the country to make others aware of what Carson City is. So I'm very, I work well with people. I have no problem. I'm open to ideas. I'll have my own ideas, but I'm always open and listening to what everyone else has to say. And then as a board, we can discuss it and see which is the better direction for Carson City.
This is a personal question, but it sets up my question. Are you a family man or?
I am a family man.
Okay. You have children, et cetera?
I have grandchildren.
Good, good. Really sets up my question because I don't, I don't feel that the apple falls far from the tree. And so I'd be interested in what you encourage your kids and grandkids to do or what they choose to do on their own, under the umbrella of you being the tree and them being the apples.
Well, when they're not climbing all over me and, you know, pulling at me or punching me, you know, and they're like, you know, they, some of them, the younger ones, for some reason started calling me Grandpa Stu Baby. So, but they, you know, that, they'll grow out of that, but, no, it's direction, especially as they get older, you want, you know, you lead by example. And I did that with my kids. They've all turned out just to be fantastic. They all went, most of them went to school here in Carson and they're spread all over, very successful. And I, I believe that, you know, as a role model and what you value and your morals and your ethics that you show your kids, they take on as they become adults and they pass on to their kids as well, so that's.
What are they involved in, like with sports or culture or?
Well, some of them are.
Or are they visitors everywhere else, too? Or what?
What's that?
Are they visitors everywhere else and then come back and see you or?
Oh, no.
In the context of what we're talking about?
Yeah, they're coming up actually next week, so some of them are too young. There's about three of them that are under the age of three. But my, the two oldest are, yeah, very, very involved in sports. They like to be active. They actually like extracurricular activities in school, so it's not just in school, but they like to do activities outside of school or after school. And then my grandson is a huge baseball fan and he loves playing baseball.
Well, I can't say you got my vote, but I'm a huge baseball fan, too. Secondarily.
I'm football myself.
It seems to be the American way to move from baseball to football now. I'm curious, too, that not only will we have a, a new board practically.
Right.
But also may have new staff coming in. And what three things would you look for in new staff, if that turns out to be something you have to deal with?
Their, their dedication and their ethics, what they believe Carson City is heading towards, what they believe Carson City is now and what we can become. And I, you know, the, like to hear the ideas and how to implement some of the ideas that we have. Work together as one board. You know, everyone has different ideas, everyone has different opinions, but at the end, we come together to work for the greater good of Carson City.
This is Stu. Thanks for, thank you for applying. And you have any questions of us?
No, I don't, no.
Anything you want to conclude remarks or anything like that?
Just the fact that, you know, I, I've been involved in this for, in the hospitality and this for over 10 years. I've seen the direction. I believe that we are just scratching at the surface of what we can do. And I believe in order to do that and stay competitive with our neighbors, you know, we see Reno and even Douglas County always advancing, always come up with ideas. I believe that we need to be in the same direction as them so we can stay competitive with them as well.
Good, thank you. And you mentioned, just out of curiosity, you mentioned the International Film Festival?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit more about that. When's it gonna be?
Well, it, it's kind of a new event. I've talked to the coordinator with it. He started it last year.
Is it, is it on your property? Is that where?
It's, it's spread out to two other properties. So, and I'm one of them. We, you know, he contacted me and then he contacted a couple of others. And what they do is, you know, they just bring in people from all over, all over the world. And he told me he has people coming in from France that we normally may not see, although we've seen a lot of international tourism. And they, they just show the, the film festivals, the classics and all that. And they go around to different parts of the country and even different parts of the world. And so this is rolling, this is becoming bigger and bigger. And the fact that they're coming to Carson City and they like to keep coming back, I think is a good indication of what we can, besides just sports. But I have not attended it, but I heard it's pretty fascinating to watch it. Have you?
I've done it. It's fun.
Yeah, so, and I think when this goes good, it's in a couple of weeks and as this goes, we'll see more and more of that as well.
It, it's really fun. Anybody that hasn't done it, go ahead and give it a try because it's great to see a film. And then you talk about it as a community.
Yeah.
On what you really enjoyed about the film. And they're always just so nuanced. So I just recommend if you have a chance to go, go.
So that's part of the culture that we can look at and as we see more in that, I think that'll open the minds that, hey, Carson City is more than sports as well.
Okay, thanks, Stu.
Sure.
All right, you're welcome to.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Mike. How you doing?
Very well. I don't know, grueling sitting up there.
What'd you do to your hand?
Boxing class.
Boxing class?
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah. That happens when you throw the wrong punch and, yeah. He didn't admit it, but trying to stay safe.
Well, all right, all right. First of all, Mike, let me, on behalf of all of us, let me thank you for applying. I, you know, you've been a businessman in Carson City for a long time, so we want to thank you for applying. And we all asked this, I think, have you been interviewed, were you interviewed before?
No.
Yeah, we all asked the same questions of every applicant, so nobody gets an, an unfair advantage. So, you know, and I usually start off with a general question to ask you, just to kind of get you warmed up a little bit is, you know, tell us a little bit about, you know, we probably know, but tell us a little bit about, you know, your background and then why you want to be on the CTA.
Do I keep pressed or what? Okay. Well, you know, I've been in Carson City since 1975, being a business owner now for almost 20 years for my first business and second business, just about three years now. The reason why I wanted to be a part of this is the fact that as president for the Downtown Business Association, it's been really nice to have that communication and channels with the Visitors Bureau. And the things, the track that they've been on, I'd like to continue seeing that, so.
And with that in mind, articulate, forget the law and all that stuff, articulate what you believe to be the purpose and goal of the CTA.
To promote the, the area, Carson City itself, the, whether it's arts and culture, whether it's events that can bring people from outside the area to Carson City and expose them to our community and the things that we have. Generate revenue for, for the businesses. Obviously, the hotel revenue is, is big and that's pretty much, I think, a good answer.
Okay. Karen?
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Karen.
Now I feel old. Anyway, Mike, the focus of the Tourism Authority is promoting events that are healthy for the community. They promote education, promote innovation. With that in mind, what would you like to see and what ways, what markets do you think the CTA should pursue to expand the utilization of the multipurpose athletics center? And of course, it increases heads and beds when we do that, so what, what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I think they're, they've been doing a really good job with, with sports, sport events, and I think that, that definitely goes in, you know, in line with that. Whether there could be more cultural type events to bring people in to utilize that, that would be good, too. But I, I like, I like what they've been doing as far as the direction of the marketing and the way that they're marketing.
Hi, Mike.
Hey, Brad, how you doing?
Good. I see four legs to the CTA: tourism, sports, recreation, arts and culture. Can you give us your thoughts on how you would prioritize those four legs and where you would spend your resources, time and money, to create the best economic impact for the city?
Can you run those by me one more time?
Tourism.
Uh-huh.
Sports.
Mm-hmm.
Recreation.
Okay.
Arts and culture.
Okay. Well, wow, I think they're all four very, you know, key points there. Yeah, I really, I really don't have a real good answer for that. I think that with the, the technology and the marketing that's been going on is a great way, especially for younger activities, reaching out to them. I think the heads and beds obviously is the most important. Sport does bring a lot of heads and beds. I mean, when you look at, you know, soccer events, their parents are bringing the families. And so I'm not sure if that really answers your question enough.
There's no right or wrong answer. It's your thoughts.
All right, excellent.
You're on the hot seat, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Lori.
In 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved a 1% increase in the occupancy tax for the arts. When we did that, we placed a five-year sunset clause. So what outcomes or results would justify your recommending that we continue that funding beyond the sunset of 2021?
Honestly, I think I have to look into that more. I don't really, I can't really answer that without diving into that. I'm really not sure how much has actually been put towards that and the results of that, but I need to look into that more.
The, the CTA board will be new because it, well, today, maybe. So how will you help expand the diversity of Carson City's tourism assets and expand the economic engine of tourism in our community?
Not just my personality, but, well, you know, being, being in this community for a long time, especially on the business side of it, I do, I am in touch with a lot of people. And just my type of business alone puts me in touch with a bunch of people. So, yeah, I think it would just have to go with my, with my experience within the community and the business community and utilize that. Welcome.
So, Mike, you and I know each other from back in Kiwanian days and you're still a Kiwanian.
Thank you.
But that's a, that's a recreation or a sporting event. Are you a family man? I did, I did never ask you that when we were Kiwanians.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I just got back from Phoenix last night. My oldest daughter and granddaughter live in Phoenix.
Great.
And I have a younger daughter still here.
I have a son who lives in that area. Tell me, since I believe that apples don't fall far from trees, what did you encourage them to be involved in and grandkids, if you have any, et cetera? And, and what have they gotten involved in? That kind of relates to what we're talking about here, culture, arts, sports, recreation, et cetera.
Hmm. Well, my daughter, my oldest daughter started off as a school teacher before they relocated to Phoenix. And with that, she got herself very involved with the school and the, and the events going on there. My, my daughters both see how involved I am with the community and support me on that. So I would just have to leave it at that, I think. John?
Okay. My second question has to do not only with the fact that it's going to be a new board, but you may wind up with new employees at the Bureau. What would you look for in people if you were on the board and looking to hire somebody? What three things would you say are the most important things for an employee?
I would like to see how well they communicate with, with people. This is a very tight-knit community, so having somebody that's kind of, you know, outgoing like that. The other thing would be their technology background because obviously I need to continually learn in that as well. So that, so that is important as well. I think I'd like to know where they were from and what brings them out here. I mean, if they're from a similar type community like we are, then I think that they'll fit in very well. If they come from a metropolitan area, I think they might have a hard time with how this community operates. So I would look at those three things.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mike, were you on the Downtown Business Association Board when the Wine Walk was started?
No, sir, no. I got involved three years ago, a little over three years ago, when I bought the business downtown and moved mine from across town.
All right. Any questions you have of us?
No, no.
Any concluding remarks? Good, bad, or indifferent?
No, I think I'd be a great fit for this board and, and keep us on the right track, I think.
Good. Thanks, Mike. And thanks again for applying. You're welcome to sit and listen.
Oh, I will.
The last one is Trish Trenowith.
Hi, Trish. How you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good. How's your property doing?
Good, very good. If you saw, we have a TV show coming.
I did see that.
Yeah, it's exciting.
That's going to be upstairs then? Is that what it?
It's going to film all over the casino. So the script was written by our owner and Joe Piscopo will star, so it's going to be super fun.
Well, before you start, why don't you take a little time, you're on TV, pitch it a little bit. Go ahead, tell us about it.
Sure. It's called Casino Boss on the premises running a casino, which is a very interesting, unique thing if nobody ever has. So it's kind of based on the Carson Nugget, but experiences that all of us have had through the years working in a casino. So Joe Piscopo will come in as someone who could inherit a casino that has never had one before. So it should be super interesting and it will film Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of next week on the casino floor. So should be super fun. We've got a casting call for extras next Tuesday. So anybody in Carson could be part of it.
All right.
Callin' all Carsonites.
I know, exactly. Everybody has, can have their moment. Fifteen minutes of fame, we say? Yes.
Good. Trish, to start off, we all ask the same questions of all the applicants, so nobody gets a leg up or anything like that.
Okay.
And I'm going to start by asking you, you know, give us, we probably know, but you tell us a little bit of your history, your background, what you're doing, and why you want to be on the CTA.
Sure. So why I want to be on is Carson is super important to me. I am a graduate of Carson High. I don't really want to say what year because that'll age me a little bit, but it's been a few years, 1990. And Carson's just growing and becoming tremendous. Like your downtown is, the downtown's fabulous. Who doesn't want to be there? And I'd love to see more tourists here to experience everything that we have in the downtown community. My background for the last several years is tourism, select service hotels, casino hotels, marketing as well as sales. So I have bus programs, banquet sales, hotel sales, catering sales, and marketing of casinos and hotels.
And articulate, if you would, what you believe to be the purpose or goal of the CTA.
I think it's a two-part, isn't it? One, one part is culture, which also brings tourism, which I think you've done an outstanding job with. There's some great things here in the arts and culture. So I think that brings a piece of tourism. There's a lot of tourists that travel to see cultural things, plays, artifacts, arts, all of those drive tourism. I think the other part is straight tourism for hotels, convention space, whether it be in a casino or non-casino, because we have both here. Bus groups, small meetings, statewide, you have a lot of shifting between the southern and the northern part of the states for annual Elks, Lions, et cetera. So I think both of those are big pieces of tourism. I think you guys have done great with sports, and that's a huge piece of the pie. But I think there's other pieces of the pie that help drive that, which is the other tourism, small businesses, transportation groups, bus groups, as well as culture groups.
Speaking of that, I see Joel Dunn in the audience here. And I'll never forget when he told me one time about the value of sports in Carson City in terms of revenue. It's a staggering number. I think it was 16 million, is that what you told me? Back then? That was?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great piece. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Trish.
Hi, Trish.
Hi, how are you today?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
The CTA's focus is promoting events that are healthy for the community. They promote education. They promote innovation. In your thought process, what markets or what things would you like to see the CTA pursue in terms of events or activities or sporting events or whatever to the MAC to increase its utilization and of course, heads and beds?
Yeah, heads and beds, right, always. I think there's still, that's a big space, and I think it can be used convention-wise. You do have a lot of, and I did address this, the Elks and, you know, groups like that that go southern to northern. But you have a lot of small business, small meeting groups in the Northern California drive market. That's certainly a huge one in the Northern Nevada area to get that drive market over. And I think that could be used for larger conventions and trainings that a lot of these big companies do that can drive the heads and beds as well as use the MAC because it can be divided up for smaller meeting groups and then large presentations. You're welcome.
Hello, Trish.
Hi, how are you today?
Good.
Good.
I see four legs to the CTA: Tourism.
Mm-hmm.
Sports.
Mm-hmm.
Recreation.
Arts and Culture.
Can you give us your thoughts on how you would prioritize those four legs and where you would expend your resources to create the best economic development for the city?
Well, there, so the four legs, so sports you're doing very well in. You can always grow in a market that you're, that you're doing well in, but my hotel's doing well because of the sports that you've brought in. I know everybody else's has as well. So I wouldn't make that my top priority since it's already there. I think the tourism piece is where you can grow more. You've, you've brought the culture, you've brought the sports. The recreation goes to me with the sports part of that. So I think that you can grow the tourism with small meetings and bus charters and tours. Mm-hmm.
Good afternoon, Trish.
Good afternoon.
So in 2016, the Board of Supervisors, we approved a 1% increase in the occupancy tax to dedicate it to the arts. But when we did that, we sunsetted it for 2021. So what outcomes or results would justify your recommending that we continue that funding beyond the sunset period?
Well, the outcome is the building of heads and beds and tourism through downtown. You want to see, so we have so many new restaurants and places in downtown, and I see lines, which is amazing because that's what you want to see. That builds tourism, that builds excitement, and that's what we always want to see in any outlet or downtown corridor, is everybody converging there and building up the tourism there. And I think the arts help do that too. If you have an art show, if you have a sculpture, if you have something you're introducing to the community and those around and culture groups that travel, those are huge. And I think that you keep extending that because you keep growing that segment of the business. Never want to shut a door on that.
That's pretty good. And then the CTA board will be new.
Yeah.
That's all I remember.
Yes. Has that ever happened?
I don't know.
I don't know that it's ever seen.
It's going to be interesting. So with that in mind, how will you help expand the diversity of Carson City's tourism assets and expand the economic engine of tourism in our community?
So I think with my background in tourism and marketing, so I have, I guess I have the tourism, sales, and marketing, I think I'm really good at gleaning out those small businesses and those bus tours. I have relationships with groups in there that I can help try to drive to this market to increase our funding and increase our income into not only the properties, but the city overall.
Trish, I'll ask you first a personal question.
Sure.
I'm not prying. I just wonder, are you a family woman? Do you have children?
I do not.
Any, well, the reason I ask, I ask everybody else who said they did what, what their kids did that is in this general area of recreation, sports, et cetera. So I'll ask you personally, what, what are you interested in in terms of, that you apply your personal time to?
My, my personal time, not as much recreation. I do have a nephew who's a year, and I see that we will be going to probably lots of softball games and baseball games and basketball. And I'm hoping basketball because that's my passion for sports. So that's my wish there. I spend a lot of time arts, museums, Broadway productions, plays, musicals. That's, that's my passion where I spend my time.
Thank you. My second question has to do not only the fact there'll be a new board, or relatively new, but that you may have new people coming on board at the, or employees at the Bureau. What would you look for? What would are the three main things you'd look for in somebody that you were bringing on board if it were up to you?
So for, well, for the hotel spot that, that I'm looking at, I, obviously I would want a tourism background. To me, it's important to have a sales or marketing. I think those are important keys when we talk about tourism. A citizen at large, I think would be great to have the community background, having been here, seen the transformation of, of the downtown, of the city itself. I think it's huge and the culture that has changed with it.
Thank you.
Trish, any questions of us?
I don't think so. I think it's exciting.
You're very articulate. Any concluding remarks?
I just am excited for the opportunity. I'd really love to help. It's a whole new board, which is, I think, exciting because everybody comes in with brand-new ideas and can try something new and look at everything new. It's all fresh eyes. So I think that's super exciting to be a part of that and part of the transformation of this city in the last several years, I think has been great.
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you.
Okay. And don't worry about graduating 1990.
Don't have to admit our years.
I'll tell you, I graduated in 63.
Are we talking college or high school?
I figured you'd go there.
It, it always amazes me when I drive by the high school and go, that's not exactly the one I graduated from because it was so different.
Got that right.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. All right. Did Jill show up? Jill Davis?
No. 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 No.
We're now on the hard part of life. The real hard part of life. You know, we usually have one or two applicants for a position. And it's always difficult there. We have seven folks now for four positions. This is very difficult. And you know, I'd like to say that Solomon always makes great decisions. We've got five Solomons up here. And believe me, you know, these are, this is probably the hardest part of our job. And I think I speak for all of us. This is, these are hard. So, you know, we're going to give it our best shot. Also, you know, I've talked to the District Attorney about whether or not, you know, we could move folks around to maybe accommodate things. The District Attorney advises that the safer course of action is to stay with, you know, if you applied for hotel motel, you're going to be in that category. If you applied for other, you're going to be in that category. If you're going to apply for citizen-at-large, you're in that category. So do it by category. Is that correct? Mr. You?
That is my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
That's your recommendation? All right. All right. Well, my suggestion then is to take the citizen-at-large first and see, and then go other and then finish up with the hotel motel industry here. So on the citizen-at-large, let's take that one up. We have two folks who are here. I'm sorry that we'll have to apologize to Jill Davis. Sometimes in the electronic world, I don't know if we have read receipts on our emails or something like that. But you want to talk about that, Nancy?
Yeah, Rachel just sent an email and said that it had gone to her spam and she accidentally deleted it, so.
Not unusual, but make sure that, and I think, you know, let her know that, you know, that we appreciate her applying and keep her, keep her in mind for further jobs.
And Mayor, we'll look into if there's a way for us to either change the application or maybe change the announcement. I mean, so long as the announcement gives everybody the opportunity to apply for the positions that are available, I think we're good there. But maybe if, and we can work with the DA's office, if it'll make him more comfortable if we amend the application so that it is clear that you have the authority to appoint them if they want to be put into a different category. So that way, we don't have to put it back out and go through the entire process again.
Otherwise, it's pretty cumbersome. All right. All right.
Could I have something to say?
Yeah, sure. Go, go.
And I'm the oldest guy in the room, so all these remarks about being old. But I've had this happen to me in a different context of what happened to Jill. And I'm really sad that that happened to her. And I would like to recommend, in the future, that we not only send them an email, but make sure that we get back somehow that they, because this is just not a good way for the city to operate. And I have told people I have to deal with, you can call me, you can send me snail mail, you can email me. But if you just email me, the chances are, I may not get back to you because I may not know. It goes into cyberspace or spam or whatever. So I emphasize that.
So let's take up citizen-at-large. There are two applicants for that position. It's Mike Santos and Candy Duncan. Somebody want to start off here?
I'll be brave and do one. No. I really thought we had the depth and experience from Candy, but I really have concerns that there'll be too many conflicts of interest. And I think it's a brand-new board and you really need them all to be able to vote all the time. And I know how tough it is up here when we can't have a full board helping move the direction. So for that reason, I'm going to support Mike Santos.
To quote my fellow supervisor on the far left down there, ditto.
And I have to say the same thing. I feel, I feel bad. I know Candy is qualified too, but that does present a concern. I know Mike's very qualified as well. He has investment in the community, so, but the conflict of interest thing, I know how difficult it is going forward. And it's an important component, as Laurie said, that everybody be able to vote on all the issues. So for that reason, Mike Santos.
All right. Well, that doesn't necessarily make...
I'm happy to be irrelevant.
Well, remember that. All right. All right. Then we'll entertain a motion to appoint Mike Santos as a citizen-at-large member to the CTA.
Okay. I move to appoint Mike Santos as the representative for the city at large for a two-year term that will expire July 2020.
Here's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you very much, you folks. And hang around for just a minute because you've got a new board coming here. I want to say some, one thing anyway before we close the meeting here. Let's take up other commercial. We have one applicant for that, Mike Riggs. We'll entertain a motion to appoint Mike.
And I just have to, I'm going to make the motion, and I just have to say, Mike was part of a group of us where Joel was present as well in the chamber and everyone. And you were a great representative for the Downtown Business Association. So with that, I would like to say that I will, I make the motion to appoint Mike Riggs as a representative for other commercial interests for a two-year term that will expire in July of 2020.
On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, done. All right. Let's take up hotel, the hotel motel industry. We have three, Michael Jones, Stu Wexler, and Trish Trenowitz. Everybody today has been extremely articulate, these three in particular. I mean, this is difficult. This is really difficult stuff. I don't know if anybody wants to, if anybody's got it, you know. Go, go.
I have, my high score went to Michael Jones. Unfortunately, I basically have Stu and Trish tied, so it'll be interesting to see where the rest of the board goes.
Oh, boy, we're on the same boat.
I have, in my scoring system, I have Mike Jones first, Stu next, and Trish next. So in my, in my way of thinking, it's Mike and Stu.
Okay, I'll be, hmm. I guess when I look at the scoring and the answers to each of the questions, so I put Michael Jones and then Tricia because I thought she, I thought she answered them in more depth as to what she could bring to the table. It doesn't mean I agreed or disagreed, but that I thought she actually listened to the question and in more depth gave a response, gave it a shot, right? Even if it would work or not work. So anyway, I'm going to go with Michael and Trish.
As a nonpartisan on the board, I'll play chicken and say, somebody make a motion and I'll decide whether I'm voting yes or no.
Solomon, the chicken.
Want to make a motion? Or you want to weigh in?
Well, go ahead and make a motion. Let's see what goes.
Okay.
I make a motion to appoint Michael Jones and Trish Trenowitz as representatives for the hotel and motel industry for a two-year term that will expire in July 2020.
Is there a second on that motion?
Okay. Hold on.
Motion dies, you know. Dan, do we need a, do we need a second on an appointment of motion?
Mayor, I did have a chance to take a look at that statute. The appointment is via this body as a whole, along with you, Mr. Mayor. So I would say, yes, it does need to come via motion and a second.
All right. All right. So we'll entertain them. Somebody want to try another motion?
That leaves the other.
I move to appoint Mike Jones and Stu Wexler as representatives for the hotel and motel industry for the city, each for a two-year term that will expire in July of 2020.
Here's a motion and a second on this one. On the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Some were abstaining. Some were quiet.
I believe in having a unified support. And I want Stu to know he was supported by me too, but I gave my appropriate reasons for...
You know, yeah. This is, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. I just, yeah, they're just very difficult. So, all right.
Very hard.
All right. So we have, ladies and gentlemen, we have a kind of a new, not kind of, but we have a new board, the hotel motel industry, with Mike Jones and Stu Wexler being on there. Now, citizen-at-large, Mike Santos, and other commercials, Mike Riggs. I would, I would ask, on behalf of the Office of Mayor, that you, one, be attentive to the importance of attending meetings and participating fully in the affairs of the CTA. And if there's a reason why your businesses or whatever happens where you can't, that you let us know and we'll go from there. But I think it's terribly important that if this gets on the ground, it's kind of a building from the ground, it's important for everybody to participate, everybody to So, you know, that's my sense. And I, maybe I'm all wrong, but I know that there's been some issues with respect to attendance for one reason or another. The CTA is an important board. I mean, critically important board, in my view, and I think in all of your up here. You know, it's the primary marketing arm of not just the culture that we have in our community, but the tourism. And in many ways, it's the face of Carson City. And so, you know, I would keep that in mind. This is not a job where you can just go be a board member and then say, well, I'm a board member and I'll show up when I need to. And I don't mean to be harsh about it, but I guess I'll say it just like that. So that's my two cents to everybody, okay? And John, I'm sorry if I stepped on anybody's toes there.
No, you didn't step on anybody's toes. I'd like to add something, though, and that is that with new board members and perhaps new employees, I encourage our city manager to, because we do have an agreement on, on some of the financial things that go back and forth that was put in under the regime that Joel was the director during. And so we have, we have an interest that's beyond just making tourism work, but, so hopefully you can work with them and make sure all this works out as we go forward. Just a heads up for everybody that I think that's important, too.
And you will find that, I think, if they don't, Jonathan, you tell me, but I think there's going to be a board agenda item right off the bat, if it hasn't already occurred, with respect to the executive director of the CTA kind of having a foot in both the CTA and the city. So that there's a greater cooperation and coordination between the city and the CTA. I'd ask you, and I know you all will, use your best judgment and take that up as well, okay? All right.
And I would just like to say, welcome aboard, since I'm the only standing member.
That's why we let her lead the questioning, I think.
I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for letting me expound there for a little bit. Anything else to come before the board?
Yes.
We have one more item.
Oh, we do. I forgot. Does that, deal with Adriana?
Yeah.
All right. Let's take up the next agenda item then. Why don't you explain the agenda item? What you want to do?
All right. So as everyone knows, Deborah Marzalene, our current public guardian, is retiring as of August 3rd. So we would need to appoint an interim or acting public guardian in the, to fill the timeframe until we can fill the public guardian position permanently. So we are asking to appoint Adriana Frelick, who's the deputy city manager currently, to act as the acting public guardian effective August 4th until a new appointment is approved by the board.
This is an important piece until we get a, a public guardian appointed by us. So it'd be my recommendation to the board, I think that Adriana is well-suited to do this. I know she's, she's pretty quick at reading the law. Also, she's a deputy to one of the dragon ladies on finances. So my suggestion is, is that we go ahead and we do this. It's the right thing to do. So, is there a public comment on this issue? Don't, somebody make a motion?
I move to appoint Adriana Frelick interim deputy, you're not interim anymore.
Check.
Are you interim?
Technically.
Technically? Okay. Interim deputy city manager is the acting public guardian effective August 4th, 2018 due to the retirement of Deborah Marzalene until the appointment of the new public guardian by the Board of Supervisors.
Here's a motion and a second on a motion. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. You're back in the soup again.
Thanks, I think.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I know, I know that you, you and, I know that you and Nancy and the DA's office understand the importance of the public guardian and the pitfalls that can occur. And so thank you for stepping up and doing that while we complete the search, okay? Thanks. All right. Anything else to come before the board?
Public comment.
Public comment. Jonathan, Gold Cardinal, how you doing, man?
Good afternoon. Jonathan Bowyer, Gold Dust West. Just wanted to take time to thank you for my opportunity to serve on the board. Started in 2012. It's a lot different than, and obviously had a chance to serve with Karen and everybody else on the board. And we had a lot of challenges along the way, but as they say, adversity makes you stronger. And just proud of what we accomplished with the support of all, everyone here. Everyone, everyone had to work together. And to your point, Mayor, about going forward and, and having the board, the CTA work closely with the city, I think that's critical. I think that's important. Probably didn't do enough of that. And so, not just the city, I think, chamber, and all the other entities that are, that are working together to improve Carson City, I think that's critical. I think it's also, the other thing I'd advise the board is, one of the things we pride ourselves on are not having agendas, not, not letting your personal feelings or, or in some cases, if you had a business overlap with or sometimes confuse you on what the mission is. And so I encourage the board to always focus, when you make your decisions, on what is the best for Carson City. You know, what's the best for board is, as long as that guides you, you always, you may not always make the right decision, but your decisions will always be based on, on good information, on, on doing what's best for the city. So, but I just want to thank you for the opportunity. It was, it was tremendous. As you know, I was general manager of Gold Dust West for eight years, Carson City. At the time, I lived in Sparks. Spent, it was like my second home. You know, I'm jealous of Mike every time I come to the property. I still feel like it's mine. He has to kick me out every now and then when I'm in there. But I mean, really, truly a special city. Had a chance to work in other, you know, I can't say too much because there's other jurisdictions as far as, season, I got to tell you, the family environment, I mean, everyone has their differences and, and squabbles and that type of thing. But working in Carson City has been like nothing, like nothing else. And I've been in Vegas, I've been Reno, I've been in Sparks, and we have a good thing going here. And I'll say we, because I'm still a part of it. And just don't lose that. So, but thank you for the support.
While you're there, and I know Joel's back there, Karen's on the board, let me just say, I don't know, the board members here, I don't, can't see them. You know, the Visitors Bureau, now the CTA, has done a remarkable job in terms of driving, you know, we've, we redid Carson Street downtown, and we're still doing more. The CTA has been extremely important and has done a good job in making sure that, you know, that, one, that's, that's publicized about what we have in Carson City, and making sure that, you know, the infrastructure improvements we're putting in are being used and utilized in an effective and efficient way by not just our residents, but those who come here. Your board has done a great job in terms of developing that. And I don't want my comments to say, you know, to detract from that, because I do think that at the end of the day, you know, it's nice, it is, when I was first mayor, you know, one, we weren't selling any homes, we weren't building any homes. And two, there was nobody, the hotel rooms were, you know, mostly empty. You go in some of the gaming casinos and they're mostly, you know, dry and, you know, nothing going on there. And now you see an activity and an energy in this community that really frankly is heartening, very heartening. And you and your board and your staff ought to be committed for that. Because it's a big part of why Carson City is here today. And I'd like to think, just, I'm mayor, I'm a longtime resident here, but I'd like to say that, you know, this is the first time, I think, that we can really feel what's going on about the sense of community, about pride in our community. And that's happening. And it's been because of the, of the effort of a lot of people. Your board has been one of those. So, all right. Anything else? Are we ready, board? It's four o'clock. Should we go take on the next one? Any other public comment?
It's time to go to work.
Karen's going, these guys are going to work. All right. Unless there's objection, we are adjourned.